Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the 47th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. This is a special meeting with only one agenda item, so we're going to move directly into our hearing agenda, calling another business. Agenda item number one, Liquor Commission, presentation of Wei Chen, Strategic Advisor, Assistant Review of Liquor Commission Enforcement Section. Ms. Chen, could you please make your name for the parents, uh, for the record?
Yes, my name is Wei Chen. I'm Senior, sorry, I'm Strategic Advisor for, in the Managing Director's Office, and I am the lead reviewer for the system review.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Uh, the liquor commissioners are in receipt of your reports that you have provided to us. That is before us, we had the opportunity to review that report. Um, as you are probably well aware, that report has also been made public.
Yes.
Any, uh, references to that report, we have the ability to, uh, reference in our materials at our desk. Um, I would like to afford you as much time as possible to, uh, present your, your findings and your systems review. It's very comprehensive, and I know you probably have a lot to get through. Um, before we get to that, however, I would like to provide just a brief, uh, procedural history in this matter. There are, um, people in the room and people listening online who may not have attended prior hearings and may not know how we got here. So, I'd like to provide some brief context for the record and then also provide some initial comments.
Sure.
So, in or around March of this year, I believe, the Managing Director's Office, um, appeared before this commission with a request to consider the engagement of Ms. Chen and her team to conduct a, uh, systematic review of the policies, procedures, systems, et cetera, of this agency, and in particular, the enforcement's, uh, division of this agency. Uh, we, uh, listened to the, the Managing Director's request. Uh, we, um, were fortunate enough to be able to discuss this with, uh, Ms. Chen at the hearing. She was available, uh, to answer questions. And we, uh, as a commission unanimously engaged Ms. Chen and her team to conduct this review. I, I, I believe broadly speaking, we did so for three, uh, basic reasons. The first is that I think this commission needed this sort of review. Um, as a commission, uh, we are relatively new. We've only been on the commission serving for a year or a little bit more, and, uh, we're not here day to day. So, uh, with all of the, uh, concerns in the public and in the internal complaints that we were seeing, et cetera, uh, we felt that we needed a comprehensive review, uh, that would enable us to understand the facts and circumstances as they are and allow us to make any determination as to what was necessary in terms of action steps. Uh, second, we believe the public needed, uh, a report of this nature. Uh, there's been concerns in the public, there's been complaints, uh, there's been formal complaints and informal complaints. Myself, as a private practice attorney, hear some of those, uh, informal complaints. And, uh, we believe that it was necessary at this stage for the public, uh, to know what was going on, to understand, uh, what was happening within this agency, and then together, um, uh, in a public and private partnership, we could understand how to effectively address those issues. Uh, and the third, uh, is, is the team that was in front of us. Uh, Ms. Chen, your, um, resume was part of the package. We were able to review that. We were able to, um, really see your depth of expertise in this field. Uh, we were able to understand, um, the work history and extensive experience that you have and the success stories that you have, both on the state and federal level. So, we were very impressed by that record, but, uh, at least for me, I was also equally impressed with your demeanor at the hearing, uh, your intellect, and, uh, for us, it was, um, a, a sign that you would be able to conduct this systematic review, um, in a very effective manner. And it was essentially what we needed, uh, in this moment and at this time. Um, so we had every confidence that we would be provided a comprehensive, um, of fact and data-driven, uh, analysis, uh, and a very candid and honest analysis, and that's what we needed. And, and I believe that's precisely what we received. So, I do want to extend my gratitude to you, Ms. Chen, to your team. Uh, we believe, uh, we haven't heard your statements, uh, but we do have to report, and even from that, um, we believe that you have, uh, provided us with a very comprehensive, um, assessment as to the condition of this agency, at least as it pertains to the enforcement division, and, um, in some conclusions and recommendations as to how, how to move forward from here. So, thank you very, very much. Um, I was going to stop there, but I, I do actually also want to acknowledge, uh, the public. Uh, thank you all for being here. Uh, there are people in this room, uh, that have taken time out of your afternoon to be here and to be present and to listen to this hearing. Uh, I understand this hearing is also being streamed online, so there are countless others that are listening in at, at home or at their, at their office. Thank you for participating. Um, and I think that speaks to the, the vital nature of this hearing and, and what we're doing here today. Um, you know, we are a public agency and we are public servants, and I think those are used colloquially a lot and, um, sometimes in a derogatory fashion, but I, I do think it speaks to, um, a, a certain level of ethical standards that we, as a public agency and as public servants, need to provide to the public, and a level of transparency and, um, ensure that what we're doing at this agency, uh, and, and how this agency is operating is at its best. Uh, and, and this report and the findings and conclusions and the recommendations that you have, Ms. Chen, and the action steps that we will, uh, take moving forward, um, speak to that public-private partnership and the ability for us to come together, to speak in an honest, um, and meaningful dialogue, and to really get to, um, action steps that will, uh, provide us with a pathway forward. So, I, I really do sincerely want to appreciate and, um, express my thanks to the public for being here, for listening in and for being involved, uh, in this process. Um, I think I'll stop there, 'cause I do want you, Ms. Chen, to, to have some time, and, and I'm, I'm a bit long-winded already, but I do want to just briefly ask my fellow commissioners if you have any, uh, initial opening statements or, or comments that you'd like to make.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair Buckley.
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank the Mayor's Office for providing us with you, Ms. Chen, and your team as you help the commission improve our operations. Um, you know, they say where there's smoke, there's fire, and pre-day one, it was obvious there were many blazes happening here in the organization. Um, and, you know, we're looking forward to your analysis helping us to prioritize our resources in addressing these fires. But I'm daunted that your recommendations are only part of the amount of work that we have here to do, right? We still have to take action on the external investigation of complaints that have been backlogged. Commissioner Hollinger often notes multiple times that we should conduct a similar, uh, study and systems analysis of our licensing processes as well, and all of this as we search for new senior staff. Um, for the public, I, I would like to note that due to Sunshine Laws, the commission received a report on Tuesday and, uh, with the public agenda of this meeting, and this is the first time we actually all have a chance to discuss it together. Uh, I did have the pleasure of working with you, uh, on the gathering of some of the data for your report, and I come with a technology background, and my technology colleagues were rather shocked and surprised at the status of our current IT systems. Uh, the commission has established the IT Systems Analysis Permitted Interaction Group in anticipation of gathering more information on the IT systems, and I would ask that you highlight any of these areas as you go through your presentation. Additionally, on page fifty-one of your report was the disturbing footnote that a matter was referred to HPD. Uh, could you please address this item when we get to it, and also highlight any other potential criminal activities that you'd like to bring in front of the commission, preferably here, but in executive session, if necessary. Uh, I'm sure we all agree that we have to be aggressive and transparent in addressing any criminal activities discovered as part of our reform of the system. Uh, against the weight of your report, I was encouraged. Uh, the staff are aware of shortcomings, and they're anxious for change. They take, want to take pride in the vital service that we provide to the community. Uh, we are at a unique time where the Mayor's Office is actively assisting us with obtaining your and others desperately needed outside support. The City Council has mandated change, and the public through complaints and lawsuits is demanding change. Now, I'm confident the commissioners and with the new administrator and senior staff will address many of the shortcomings in your report. Uh, and I would ask if you and the Mayor's Office are amenable that you return next year and provide us with a progress report on, you know, changes that we've made and areas that we could do improvement on. And I would last, like to ask the commission to ensure that we have budget for this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Hong. Thank you very much. Um, and I do very much echo the comments from Commissioner Hong, and I do, um, just want to make the simple statement that change is happening. I mean, the fact that we're here today evidences that. Um, are we done? Of course not. Your report is abundantly clear that we have work to do. Uh, and Commissioner Hong just mentioned other work in addition to this that is necessary, and, um, we look forward to, to doing that and, and to, um, working with the public to, to find ways to continue, uh, to progress and make changes that are necessary for the better of this agency. So, with, um, with further ado, Ms. Chen, please take the floor.
Thank you so much. I want to begin by thanking the commission for entrusting me with this review, and to thank the liquor administration, Ms. Hira, Ms. Reyes, for your, and Ms. Investigator Fontaine, and all the members of the team who participated in interviews and document productions for their cooperation in the process. I also want to thank Ms. Su and Mr. Prager for their invaluable assistance. I could not have done this by myself without their valuable assistance. I think I want to also note, for me, who does a lot of these types of organization reviews and investigations, how incredibly unusual it is for this to be done in a public atmosphere. So, when I normally do this in private practice, this is usually done under attorney-client privilege, so that every single piece of information can be protected to the maximum. For a public agency, for an organization, to want to encounter, um, this type of challenge in, in this very public way, I think it's courageous, and I also think it's a commitment to public service that really needs to be applauded. So, I really do applaud the commission's decision to proceed in this manner. So, before I go to report, I want to also emphasize again the focus of the system review. From the time I first came to the commission, uh, in February, and also in my report, I have repeatedly emphasized that this is not an investigation, it is a system review, and I've said this in everyone in my interviews, and the reason that, here's the distinction. An investigation typically is, has the purpose of trying to prove or disprove specific allegations or conduct. A system review has the goal of trying to understand how a system operates and how to improve it. So, I want to stress that because when people see a report that's not glowing, there is a natural tendency to look for someone to blame. That's oftentimes the first reaction. Who is at fault? Who is culpable? I think the worst thing we can do right now is to start pointing fingers, especially if we start pointing fingers at women and men who currently work in this agency. The challenges I've noted in my report are the results of long-time systemic issues. If you took new cooks and put them in a kitchen with hot plate, a rusty pan, and no recipe, you cannot blame them for not serving you a Michelin-starred meal. Throughout this interview, I did not meet a single individual who struck me as acting in bad faith. What they all wanted was to do their jobs in the best way they knew how, and what they all need is to be equipped, guided, and supported. If we play the blame game and we direct the blame to the people who work here, we make it a worse place to work, and we make it that much more difficult to attract good people, and that's not an outcome that anyone would benefit from. So, instead, I'd like to see us resist that impulse to blame and really focus on how we, we can improve. And what I hope to see is that all the stakeholders in our community can step forward to help make this agency a place where good people can proudly and effectively do public good. So, for the time we have today, I'd like to propose the following. The report has been prepared to speak for itself in its, in its entirety. So, I'm going to assume the commission and any interest of the party have, has had the time to study the report and have questions. So, I suggest that I do not go through this report slide by slide, because I don't think we'll have enough time for that. Um, but for each section, uh, so I, I, I propose that we go through it by section, and for each section, I can provide a very brief, and I do have one-to-two sentence highlight, and then really just open up for questions that, that you may have and you want to discuss. The only thing I would ask for is that I'd like to spend more time discussing the recommendations, and particularly some of my, my, my thinking behind that. Why do I think some of the recommendations address issues that I have found? So, I'd just like to ask that we reserve at least thirty minutes for, for the recommendation discussion if we start to run out of time. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
All right. So, on the projection, we have what we're doing.
Do we want to project the?
So, we, we can project, um, but let's, let's hold off for now. Um, let me just go through by section, and if anyone references a specific slide, we, we can go there. Um, so the introductory section, review, origin, methodology, background, context, um, I think they speak for themselves. Any questions or point for discussion? I think the only thing I would note for that is just how severely understaffed this agency is, and that really does have, have an impact on everything. As we think, and, and we do need to keep that in mind as we move forward with recommendations. Everything, honestly, is always easier said than done. When you go to implement these, somebody's got to do all those tasks that's necessary to make something happen, and right now, they simply don't have enough bodies. And so, so I think that's a, that's a significant, uh, context that we need to know. Um, the next overall section is on culture. Uh, for that section, my very high-level observation is, for enforcement unit itself, the lack of a, what I call a playbook. So, this is the policies and procedures and standard operating process. There, there isn't one place where someone can go to and say, "How do we do this? What is our standard operating procedure for this?" It's very much by word of mouth. It's very, um, it's, you know, it's very subjective in some ways, because since you don't have a playbook to go by, you, you try to make the best decision you can, given what you know. And so, so that's what really struck me in terms of the culture there. Um, I also think it is a very difficult environment to work in many ways. Um, your work time is seven PM to three AM, and for people with families, that means, you know, you probably don't get to see your family all that much, and you go into nighttime establishments that serve alcohol. Alcohol is not known for bringing out the best behavior in people, and so you're going into situations that can be rowdy, that can be noisy, can be combustible. And so, going out at night, doing this job at night after night, is difficult, and that understandably creates a dependency with each other. It's an atmosphere where, when you work with folks that, you know, that closely in that kind of atmosphere, you really need to trust each other, and you, you need to, you need to build that relationship where you do listen to what each other says. And that, combined with that lack of playbook, I think, makes room for a lot of subjective decisions that are not necessarily informed by data. So, that's the, the overall observation for the enforcement section. I think for the overall section, I was, uh, for overall agency, I, I was struck by the sense of that lack of trust that seems to exist. It's a small organization. There are only thirty people working here right now, and many of them are not talking to each other. Some of them have complaints filed against each other. When someone has a complaint, they don't go to this other person and say, "You know what? I don't think I got enough training. Can you do more training?" Or, "I don't like the way you talked to me yesterday. Can we talk about that?" They file a complaint instead. Nothing wrong with filing a complaint, that's your legal right to do, but I think in such a small organization, the number of complaints and the, the issues that have driven those complaints really did strike me as a display of a, a lack of trust, a lack of collegiality among people who really should be working very closely together. So, I'll pause there, and that, those are my sort of high-level remarks for the cul- for the culture section.
Okay. Should you share any comments or questions for Ms. Chen regarding the culture portion of her system review?
Yeah. Yes, Ms. Chen, I believe one of the items that you rather highlight, right, is that, um, some of the modeling of the agency in enforcement is HPD-based, and inherently, this is more of having a safe environment for serving alcohol, which is different than enforcing criminal law. And, uh, I wanted to know if you want, do you want to highlight those areas now or wait until we get into the policy?
No, I'm happy. I mean, that's a theme that does run throughout this report as well. I, I noted that from, from, really from the culture section all the way to the end, including my recommendation to diversify the cultural orientation. I think there is an important difference between law enforcement and regulatory enforcement, and I think that distinction has been overlooked. Law enforcement enforces all kinds of laws, criminal laws, and they're conducting usually investigation in view of, in reaction to an allegation, in, in reaction to, to an event. So, that's why they cannot just come into your home unless you give them permission or they have a search warrant. Regulatory inspection can come into an establishment without a warrant, because what they're doing in terms of enforcement is very specifically limited to that topic that they're enforcing. So, here it's enforcement of liquor laws and, and regulations. And because of that distinction between regular regulatory enforcement and law enforcement, oftentimes you have very, you should have very different mindsets about how you go about it. But what I have observed is really particularly with the field services, so that's both licensing and enforcement, there is very strong, um, HPD sort of influence and legacy. You know, we, we know the policies, they're remarkable resemblance. There are policies, and you know, we, we see more of that in the policy section, and there are policies I don't even know why they're there, because those are, you know, search warrants, lineups, detention, that's what a police officer does, not what liquor inspectors do. Why are they in the policy? So, I think there is that, heavy influence, there is that presumption that this job is just like HPD, when it's actually very different. And I think that difference really needs to be, uh, attended to. Anything else?
Yes, I have a, I think it's more of a comment, but there may be a question here somewhere. Um, I, I was impressed at the honesty and candidness of the interviewees of the staff. Um, that's often difficult, I presume at least, difficult to extract out of, out of these types of reviews. And I think that one speaks to, um, your ability and your expertise to do that, and so again, we thank you for that. But I think it also speaks to the fact that a lot of these employees and staff, maybe all of them, want a better environment internally. They want policies to help them, they want training to make sure that they, um, have the expertise they feel they need to do the job and do it well. And, uh, for me, that was one of the more alarming pieces of, of the, uh, system review as a whole, because, or perhaps it's just my philosophy, and this goes far beyond this agency, but the value of our workforce and our people cannot be underestimated. And if we provide an environment that's supportive of our employees, that provides them with training, that provides them with policies that, uh, allow them to know exactly what they're supposed to be doing and how to do it, training to make them feel like they can do the job and do it well. Um, if our goal is to create an environment that allows our employees to thrive and allows them really to be the best version of themselves, then that is going to be front-facing to the public when they're doing their job. And I think one of the fundamental breakdowns is internally, when we're not, um, providing that type of support to our employees. And again, I think this is any organization, not, not just an agency. Um, but to me, that is one of the core elements that I want to see addressed, and I know you've made recommendations on that. And that's multifaceted, our policies and procedures and training and hiring and what, and whatnot, but, um, for me, that was a big joy, was, um, the extreme need to change the internal culture, uh, of the agency and to provide our staff with, uh, the appropriate tools and training and policies and things. Uh, Commissioner Hong mentioned this in his opening remark, uh, and you mentioned this too. I think everyone here generally wants to do a good job. Um, I don't think, uh, there's ill intent. I don't think there's an intent to, um, do bad in the community, um, but they're stuck. And part of our job is to help un, get them unstuck and give them the tools and, uh, and things that they need to, to really thrive and, and, and be the best version of themselves. Um, I guess it's not a question.
No, but I, but I would like to respond to that. I, I completely agree that these employees want, they really do want to be good at their jobs, and they also really want to be heard. And I think one of the things that we don't do, we just as a society, don't do well enough, is really listen to each other. And there, here are employees that in some of the worst times, particularly during COVID, we asked them to go into, uh, you can consider dangerous situations, and, uh, and then when things didn't go well, they feel like they get blamed, but nobody is bothering to hear their side of the story. And when I met with them and I, I said to them in every interview that my job is here to listen to you, because we want to change things for the better. I don't do your job, you do this job. You know what's needed to make this better. And what I'm hoping that I have done is to reflect some of those, um, suggestions and sentiments that, that they've had. Um, and I also find it, you know, it was very, it was, it was, it was a good experience when, you know, in the beginning of every interview, I tell them that you are free to terminate this anytime. In fact, you can walk out right now. Um, you are, you're represented by counsel, you can have your counsel available, you can not answer a particular question, and you're in control of this. So, I recall there was one particular interview where the person, after I said this, said, "I'll stay a little." And then, at the end, this person went on, like, we're at time, and I signaled that the interview was over, but this person had more to say. He called, he kept wanting to, you know, continued to share his thoughts. So, I think that really just reflects how much they want to be heard. And I would love to see overall that we can create more of these opportunities. That's the thought behind some of the recommendations is, you know, for people to have more opportunities to work each other, to have their opinions, be part of this system input, um, in, in changing things.
Thank you. That, that's encouraging in its own way. Um, I do have one question, and feel free to defer this to later, because I feel like it may be more appropriate, um, when we discuss other, other sections, but, um, when Commissioner Hong mentioned HPD-based, police powers came up in my mind, and, um, the fact that we have certain police powers, and my question is, should we? Is that appropriate? Is that something that we need to look at, maybe from a, a rulemaking standpoint or a policy standpoint? So, if you want to discuss it in the policy and rulemaking, we can do that, but that was one of the-
We, I think I only have a very, so I can, I think that's something that the commission should certainly consider revisiting, uh, in terms of what police power it believes is appropriate, um, to, to retain or to gain or to give away. Um, I think that's a, I think that's the kind of issue that really should be revisited on a regular basis anyway.
Thank you.
I posed that, that, I made that sound more like a question than what was actually.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for this section for?
This just might be a little out of, out of order, something that I'd wanted to do, and that you mentioned in your recommendations was the ride-along.
Yes.
Um, and two things. One is to experience what the job entails, but the second one is as a, as a soft channel of having voices heard, and if, when the time comes, you want to maybe talk about that experience as well.
Uh, I, I didn't go on it.
Oh, I thought you did want to.
No, Ms. Su, um, was the one who attended. I, I think I'm too old to stay out of it. But I, I very much believe in this walk, at least a minute in someone else's approach. And when I was younger, um, as a prosecutor, I had gone on ride-alongs with, uh, police officers and agents. Um, that was, that was precisely what I wanted to do, was I present their cases in court, and I want to understand how those cases, you know, what was happening with those cases when they were on the ground. And, um, so, so that, that was something that Ms. Su was able, able to do, and, uh, I also think it gave us an opportunity to really just interact with the investigators in their work environment as people. And I think that was, you know, like, I think that's a, that's an experience that I think you would benefit from, and they would also benefit from the interaction with you.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have any questions, but I did want to make a comment in the culture section. You know, I thought it was a breath of fresh air to see that, um, during interviews, you were able to, you know, fully connect with the staff and get information from them to understand how it is. Um, and based off kind of what you've said in that cultural center, I can see how it can be construed as a lack of trust, because there is lesser people here, and the more bodies you have, obviously, the more ability you have. And the more bodies you have, obviously, the more ability you have to spread people out. So I was glad to see that there was a breath of fresh air in that area of being able to get people to talk with you.
I think really it wasn't anything other than a genuine willingness to listen. And I think that can come from anyone. So, thank you. Policy and procedures, I think I was, I've been quite explicit in, about my observations. So I'm, I'm not going to sort of put further editorial on it, I'm just going to let you ask questions that you might have.
Do you have any? Okay, so a question that I have that, I'm slightly embarrassed, I don't know the answer and I'm looking for you to, was the criteria for conducting inspections, both random and, you know, targeted? And is that something that was policy-driven, that's obsolete? Or is just handed down through oral history?
There is a policy, and I don't, forgive me, I can't recall the policy number, and clearly it would be somewhat dated, probably one of the 2006 policies that addresses sort of, if I recall, categories of licensees that should be inspected. So there, I vaguely recall sort of, you know, there should be restaurants and dispensers and whatnot. But there was no sort of, for example, percentages. It sort of names a few categories and say, you know, these should be included. But I think the bigger point is that this policy is just not known. I mean, nobody, not one person referred to the policy. And this is, this is, this was the case with most of the policies. That even when there's clearly a policy on, on something, nobody referred to it. And I will say, once again, I don't blame them because if you were to make an attempt to look at the policies and the first thing you see is things that completely do not apply to your job, why would you continue looking? Right? I, I pick up, let's say someone did pick up the policy manual and they start looking, go, oh, arrest warrants, search warrants, detention, this is not for me, I'll prob, I'll probably put it back. So, so I, I think the policy being the way it is is not striking people as a helpful resource. So therefore, it's sort of in the corner.
Thank you.
I think I have less questions on this section and more, I want more insight onto your recommendations because I believe your, your report essentially says we're starting with a blank canvas and we're going to have to work from there, at least for the internal policies. But what I did want to ask, well, at least first clarify is, the policies and procedures in this section is dealing with both internal policies that are adopted at maybe an administrator level, let's say, and administrative regulations that are set forth in the, well, first, Hawaii statutes and second, the Hawaii administrative rules. Are you including both of those types of policies and procedures in this section?
Sorry, can I, let me just make sure I can understand before I, would you mind repeating that question?
Sure, so from, from my perspective, there are kind of two broad sets of policies and procedures. One are the internal policies that are handled internally.
Yes.
They're, they're discussed and passed internally by staff here. The seconds are regulations that are given to us by either the Hawaii Legislature for the Hawaii statute or the Hawaii administrative rules. We have some control, at least over the Hawaii administrative rules, we have much less control over the Hawaii statute. So I'm wondering, are you analyzing all of that in this section?
My focus was primarily on the internal.
Okay.
And I do think the internal is probably a more urgent, if I compare the two. But, you know, my, my personal view with any laws, regulations, laws and procedures that they all should always have a regular review cycle. Whether it's, you know, I, I would say a minimum of three years, that, you know, every, every policy should have a review cycle. It could be five years. I think anything beyond five can be a little bit, you, you start getting into the possibly think it's stale and outdated range. But for the internal policies, they're way beyond that, right? And they're so clearly, should be, they're, they're so clearly irrelevant to the investigator's work when they should be very relevant to their work. And so I think that's really the more urgent piece. I think the, just the, my brief look at, you know, the liquor rules, I think there is probably, I pointed out a couple of places where it could probably be modernized. Right? So that the assumption in some of those rules was from, I think, a slightly different era. So.
Yeah, just by way of example, I, I know from representing nonprofit organizations that the IRS request slash requires a review every five years of internal policy.
Exactly.
There's precedence in, in other areas that would go to your point. Commissioners, any other questions in this section? Commissioner, please proceed.
Okay. Then we go to the sort of recruitment, training, evaluation, promotion section. The recruitment, as you saw, if I wanted to apply for a job as an investigator, I could not find how to do it. And given the, the number of vacancies, I think that's a significant concern. So, and there, there have been, in some of the interviews, there have been discussions about, you know, trying to be more creative and proactive in, in recruiting. I don't, I'm not aware of specific plans to do so, but there is certainly awareness of the need to do more active, proactive in recruitment. Training, everybody wants more. There was not one person I talked to who says, "I think we have enough training." They all want more, they want more structured training, they want recurring training. They want training, I think that's relevant to what they do. I mean, the trainings that they have recounted to me, that I reported in the report, some of them just did not seem to be that directly relevant to what they do, right? So, you know, why, why the psychological profiling training for, you know, that's just, not something I imagine they would do every day. So it sounds like, it sounded like some of the trainings they've gone to were really designed for other law, for law enforcement agencies. And I would like, I think it would be beneficial if they got more specific trainings relating to what they do. So, so that's the training piece. The evaluation was struck me was that there's just no standard, there's no documented standards. Nobody knows what, so, so I would ask people, like, how, you know, how do you know you've done a good job? How, how do you know what you have to do to pass probation? And there are sort of general idea, well, you know, we, you need to be able to write good reports, you know, you need to have good rapport with the licensees, you need to work well with people. Sort of sort of common sense knowledge about what you think, you know, when, how, how do you evaluate someone at this job? But there is nothing documented. There is nothing that really tells people, here are the five things that we're going to evaluate you on. And really focus on trying to, you know, trying to address particular areas where they need to perform. There's, there's just, you know, the, the evaluation form, which is actually not unique to the, to this agency, is, is the Citywide form, you saw, it's unsatisfactory and satisfactory, basically. And that really, to me, is not very helpful. And, and what I think is also interesting is how that plays into promotion. So promotion, from what I could gather, was largely dependent on, I assume satisfactory performance, up to the point you applied for the promotion. And then you have this one interview, that's by external stakeholders. What if you're just someone who's very good at your job but doesn't do well in interviews, right? I, I just, I, or vice versa. And I also think the interview questions, I mean, I gave examples of them. I was puzzled, and I will tell you, I, I'm, I'm a trained lawyer and I was, I, I was, I'm a former federal prosecutor and I could not answer that Fourth Amendment question. So I, you know, I, I don't know what that has to do with the liquor investigator's job. And I don't know why that question is there. So, so some of those questions that I think are, are just, you know, again, I think we're talking about HPD legacy and influence there. So those are my sort of high-level observations on that, on that section. Any other, any questions?
Okay, so to the extent that there is, you know, promotional career path within the investigative side or maybe you can move within the city, do, do people express a desire and, and, I don't know, a career path, see a career path within the liquor commission itself or as a stepping stone to somewhere else, like, what's the general feeling?
I think the general feeling, so, so a lot, some people come into this position in hoping that this will lead to other law enforcement opportunities. So that's, that's not surprising. And I think that's a perfectly, you know, perfectly fine system if we basically attract people who see this as an entry-level job and want to move somewhere else. And then there are, you know, but ultimately you do want to at least retain some of the people who want to, who can have, bring that experience into more supervisory roles. I think right now, given the public scrutiny and the low staffing, morale's low. And, you know, I, I will say, I asked, there's one question that I ask almost everyone, which is if someone you cared about asks you, "Hey, you work at the liquor administration, I'm thinking about working there," what would you say to them? I think with the exception of one person, not one person would recommend it. And to me, that's very sad, telling me. And, and it ranges, right? So, so some of them would say, "This could be a good job, but not now." But some of them would say, "No way." And because the experience for them has been difficult. And I think if you're thinking about recruiting and building up this agency, that's something that needs to change.
I think, I think you cited it later on in your report, in things we need to look forward to do in the future. But training, I know you had noted, or noted specific areas. Were there other areas that you had thought about, you know, like other, not areas, what I asked, I think you cited a specific liquor and.
The National Association.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think if there's other, is there, were there other training areas that you saw or thought of that, I mean, besides that? I mean, obviously, training is something, reading through the training portion, everyone is stating that, you know, they want more of, or more structure. And I think the more places we can find structure for it
Yeah.
would give them more opportunities. You know, obviously, the better trained you have someone, the more efficient and able to handle the task that they may come across
Yeah.
is there. So I was just wondering if you had other further ideas in regards to just that one agency?
Yeah, so this, this is, this is a bit of a chicken and egg problem. So, so there's been suggestion from, I think, externally as well as from some of the investigators I interviewed, that, you know, for example, they, they should be like HPD and have an academy. But they don't have enough people to run a regular academy. You have to have a certain volume to be able to run a regular academy. If you're only getting two, one, two new people every three months, you can't run an academy of that. So I think what we have to do is really just think out of the box and, and, you know, think about how do we get them more structured training, that's liquor enforcement-focused. So the, the National Association idea was that, you know, at least, I think of a reason, that's typically where I always think first, is, you know, where, where's this community of people who do this type of work? So I have not studied their curriculum, so I don't know what their curriculum would entail. But the other thought that I also mentioned was, you know, we could bring liquor enforcement personnel from other states and municipalities here. And this is the beauty of being in Honolulu. I mean, you know, any liquor inspector on the East Coast would be happy to spend hours in Honolulu in February. So I, I, you know, and I, I, I think we can even sort of market this to, to other municipalities as this could be a win-win situation, this would be considered a reward for your top performer. They get to come and be an instructor, onsite instructor in Honolulu for a month, two, two months. We get the benefit of top-performing enforcement, experienced enforcement personnel to, to help us train. I also think some of the things that, you know, towards a more structured training, you know, really developing a curriculum. There is, you know, there is, there has been an attempt to do that. And, but as you see, it's based on people writing up what they think should be done, what they think the standard operating procedure is, and they put it together. And the next person, you know, if we have a new person, they're going to change that. And then the new person comes, they're going to change that. So it's not institutionalized. What I think will be really helpful is develop an institutionalized standard curriculum and, and really think through some of the, you know, what, how do we get the resources to teach certain things? So for example, de-escalation. There's policy, first of all, there's policy on de-escalation that nobody knows about. The policy itself is not terribly helpful, it basically says we should de-escalate. So it doesn't actually teach you how to do that, it just says we should do that. But there are, there are training providers who do get de-escalation training. I think the other topics that might, might be interesting would be, I'm sure there is a whole field of study of how alcohol influences people's behavior in public and how one should interact with them, understanding how alcohol influences behavior and how they interact with us. So there are certainly, you know, resources from National Association, from other municipalities and states, and maybe from academia. So I think we just need to, we need to be creative, think creatively about it. And, but some, the difficulty is going to be the volume. So a lot more is, is, it's going to be a combination, I think, of sending our people to structured training that the National Association or others are providing, or perhaps negotiate with other states and say, or, or municipalities and say, "Can our people join your training?" So it's, I think leveraging resources like that, it would take exploration and negotiation, but I think it's worth the effort to see what we can get out of those options.
Thank you.
A strategy in addition to structured training that I've seen and found effective in at least other industries is the idea of buddies or mentor mentee, where you not only get training from your mentor, but you also get relationship building, you have a, a person that you can trust to, to speak confidentially, et cetera, et cetera. Was that something that you saw presence, was trying to be presence? Is that something that you think could work in this type of agency?
I think right now we just don't have enough experienced people, we don't have enough people, period. And I think we have only, we have basically the three supervisors who are more than three years in their role. And this was, but to, to leverage on that, this is also one of the reasons that's driving me to say that we should naturally implement an existing policy that all level-three investigators do 50% licensing, 50% enforcement. Because the licensing investigators started out as enforcement investigators. They became investigator-three and some of them moved to licensing. And then that's all they do, they now write, "Only do licensing." If we can start mixing that, we can at least get some of the more experienced people into the, into the mix.
Thank you, any other questions on this section?
Okay. Enforcement practices, I think Commissioner Hong, that's where I'm going to, you know, pick up on your technology. I was struck by how paper-entended it was. And we, you know, we see, and I, I did highlight a lot of the data issues. But you can see how that happens, you've been out all night, at 3:00 in the morning, you're coming back trying to input these, these things into the computer, easily miskeying, miskeying this and that. Very confusing in terms of time, you have to select a date. But your fore of duty covers two days. So it's 11, you know, you start it at 7:00 PM, day one, you end at 3:00 AM, day two. You got to remember changing the date if you're doing those entries. So those entry errors are not at all surprising to me. And they're, but they really contribute to an inability to use the data effectively. So I, I remember thinking when I was looking at the system, I said, there's got to be like easier ways to do this, right? So I went online, just quickly looked at sort of GPS track, you know, back-based devices. I, I'm no technology expert, but just a, a quick Google search, I saw at least a dozen vendors out there that do this sort of GPS-based tracking. So I, I think there, I don't know, you know, what technology solution we are going to end up with, but I certainly think we need to start searching for one because this is incredibly, seems to me to be incredibly inefficient and prone to error.
Yeah, but my, my colleagues were amazed that technology we worked on at the year 2000 level was still enforced for our, our staff. So I'm certain we can do better.
Right. And, and again, this is something the staff is aware, they. They said, you know, so I asked them, what if you had a GPS based tracking device where it just automatically logs where you go? And they said, that would be great. So.
Just to comment, I I do agree that for me, I'm, I don't have the tech background that Commissioner Hong has, but for me, paper intensive, anything these days is outdated and inefficient. And it's prone A to error, but it's also prone to less transparency and accountability. So I absolutely agree that moving away from a a paper system and something digital is necessary. The GPS also seems obvious to me. And I'm hoping a relatively simple thing to research, I mean, my wife knows everywhere I go with the iPhone these days. So hopefully, that's something that we can easily implement. But I do agree that that would make, again, more transparency and more accountability as well as a more efficient system.
Exactly.
Okay, proceed to the next section, thank you.
So next section is the enforcement pattern. So I think a couple of things I'm gonna highlight there. One, one is the data issues. And and this is why I chose to very prominently say, we we, as I present those patterns, you have to keep in mind, they're only good for like to to assess rela- relative sort of trends. So this seems more than that. How much more? We cannot be precise, just be given the data issues, including those that that I've already pointed out. But what I'd like to do, so so we have this this visualization of establishments that have been inspected very frequently versus never inspected or and with different frequencies in between. So I'd like to ask Mr. Prager to actually show you what the live version of that visualization looks like. And as he's getting ready, I'm gonna say that if if we don't have anything else, if we don't have that GPS system, at least before the investigators go out for each shift, they can look at a map like this instead of the paper DARS, the the clipboards of paper DARS and try to remember which ones, you know, uh someone didn't go to or did go to, which is what they currently do. If they even just had this visualization, this would be a good big help and and it's done, like they can use it today. So Josh, you wanna show us?
Yeah, sure. So I'm looking through the the data we kind of put together, the the visualization in Google Earth. So we can basically have an easy snapshot, seeing where inspections were done, where they weren't. So here, basically, we have all licensed businesses from the data that were licensed for at least a hundred, held licensed for at least a hundred eighty days. And we colored them by basically how many inspections they got for the amount of time they were open. So you'll see some of these little green bubbles are licensed businesses that were never inspected. Whereas the other circles, they're colored green, yellow, orange, red, are businesses that were inspected in increasing frequency. So green is, I believe, inspected no more than one time in every hundred eighty days. Yellow has been inspected no more than one time every ninety days. Orange is no more than one time every thirty days, and then red is more than one inspection every thirty days on average. So this kind of just let us go get a quick snapshot, so you can immediately see there's kind of these clusters of areas that are, you know, more red, more orange. So that would indicate there are kind of hotspots that investigators go to and perform more inspections with more frequency. Whereas other areas may be, you know, much, much less frequently visited, much less inspected. And, you know, also that stands out as you can see businesses that were never inspected that are still, you know, in close proximity to businesses that were frequently inspected. So this was just kind of a tool we we used to visualize the data and and looking through all the investigation.
So you can put one, let's look at one that's more red next to green.
Yeah, so we can click on any of these points and immediately see all, you know, the the data. So this is kind of a roll up. So we see the business name, the number of times it was inspected in total was a hundred and ten. And then we can see the the pillar coding is based on the inspections per day, basically. More easy to understand perhaps is the days per inspection. So this business was inspected on average every twenty-three point nine days.
And look at, let's click on a green right next to it.
Yeah, so here's a green business was inspected once every three hundred eighteen days on average.
Wow, this is really impressive. Thank you. Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you. So we we thought this was, and this, Mr. Prager, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be infinitely easy to do if your database target is all currently valid license as opposed to during this period, some are active and some are not.
Yes, we had, we had to do a lot of work to to filter the data to look at what was specifically relevant. Because the whole data you're looking at covered a wide range of businesses, many that were only, you know, special licenses that were only for a few days. Many places that have gone out of business at this this time. We were able to do some filtering, so that what you just saw was, as I said, businesses that at least held license for a hundred eighty days and fell into certain categories. So we kind of got a better visualization that way. But again, a lot of it falls back on how the data is is sorted. So it would make it definitely easier if the data entry was was improved.
Well, yeah, and and it's it's a good feedback loop in that if people are looking at it in this way, we have a reason to ensure that we have clean data and data integrity. This is, this will be a useful tool to at least consider, you know, getting implemented.
Right. It it's it's interesting because that, you know, this data range, as I noted, they include restaurants, not restaurants, establishments that may have been only open part of the time that during time period. But if we're building one today for, let's say, daily use, you just, you know, your 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 base data is basically all currently valid licenses. That would be much easier, wouldn't require as much work, right?
Correct.
Okay, any questions on that?
Just to be clear, this was from the DARS report database that's.
Yes, it was a combination of the the DARS reports as well as a list of licensed inspections, or licenses, you know, they've been issued to businesses.
Okay, thank you.
If to clarify, do you mean question on what was just presented or question on the section generally?
Uh, on the, on this, on what was just presented.
So that that was presented, if you were to start something or get something like that and have GPS enabled things, would that automatically be able to sync to something like that that would upload over time?
Yes, you could, you could definitely relatively easily connect it to a database and a visualization tool.
Because I mean, I just think, right, then you can change, they would change from color to color, right, depending on where they would be, right?
Correct, you could, you could do any sort of thing. And one thing I I I didn't show, but I can show it here really quickly, is we actually did explore briefly showing routes as well. So if I turn on this this layer here, you can see here's an example, I took one day and just applied all of the routes, all the inspectors to. So you can see these paths here, you can have a start point in the green, and then they go to the intermediate yellow points and then end at a red red point. And you can click on any of these and see all the the information about the the business they they stopped at. And so this, again, was just with kind of the rough data we had.
Right.
If you had connected it with, you know, dedicated GPS tracking system, that would be much easier. But it's it's certainly something that's easily able to be done with the protocols.
Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, honestly, you have to give someone, you you get someone with the capabilities of Mr. Prager and my interest in data. I mean, we could be digging for this for the next year.
Yeah.
So, but this was really just to demonstrate a relatively easy way to just look at, to try to equalize the the inspections. And if you look at some of the data, you can see, um, the the, you know, the the places that get inspected a lot tend to be nighttime establishments. And in, when I interview investigators, I studied the data before I interviewed them. And I would ask them, you know, so if I I see that they have gone to a particular place a lot and I look at the data and see what's nearby that's never been inspected, there would be. But then I, before I even talk to them, I have my answer because those never inspected places are daytime establishments. They're closed by seven PM. So that's why they have not been inspected. So that that was anecdotally what I had found as I prepared for interviews with the data. Okay, so any further questions on this section before I address the 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 question on slide fifty-one that Commissioner Hong wanted to address?
I do have a few questions and and it's popped into my head as you were showing that. And it goes to paper versus some other form of digital system. In your interviews and analysis, did did anything come up regarding app-based system so that you could be accessing this while on the road? It would all be, we're so app-based these days.
Oh, yes, I I asked them, they they said it would be hugely helpful, hugely helpful. So so right now, and I think I've noted this in my report, their system, because it's paper-based, so so they would go to an establishment. They have to note the time in and time out. And they have to look up the license number of the place they just went to. There's two ways to do that. You could also either do it based on printout, that's very thick, that's an alphabetic listing of all licenses. And, uh, you know, which is not terribly helpful. Or you can go back to the office and look it up. And it's, this is just adding another extra step in what is already a rather cumbersome process. So if there is an app, I asked them, you know, would you like that? And again, the answer was, that would be great.
The zone system that was set up and that you had mentioned in your report, did you find that effective? Is that a good way to go about divvying up the island? Is there a better system that you were even seeing while you were reviewing that data?
I I think that system is currently just meaningless because they have so few people. When when you have essentially only two teams that you can send out, I mean, what does it matter? So so in those times, they told me that we would just divide, like you go east and you go west. And, you know, since since we're actually starting off sort of to the east side of the island, west is a huge territory, right? So so right now, with the understaffing situation, that zone assignment is rather meaningless. I think if and when they're fully staffed, I think, I have no reason to think that that system does not make sense. Because dividing it into territories seems to, you know, be a good idea. But I think if you also diversify the hours of inspection, so if you have daytime, evening, and nighttime tours, then they would, you know, they might, they have to figure in that difference. Because you're you're gonna have to, again, use data to look at the licensees. And, you know, where are the daytime open licensees? Where are the nighttime licensees? And if you look at those patterns, you might wanna configure your assignments differently. But I think that, you know, you would have to look at the data to make that decision.
One of the concerns that I had in this section was the frequency of certain types of establishments being frequented. And at least from my interpretation of the data, it would appear as though some were certainly, as a category, some were frequented more than others. And I would like to understand that a little bit better. So if you have any insights from from your research, how, why that might be? My understanding is that you can visit a location for different reasons. One would be it's your nights and you pick your places and you go. A second would be a complaint that comes in that says this establishment's certain minors or whatever the case may be. And you, based on a complaint, would go to that location. One of the chief things that I'm concerned with is is some sort of targeting of establishments, whether intentional or unintentional even. And creating a system that more neutrally allows us to do the inspections, at least putting complaints aside. Because I understand that's premises-specific, but putting those aside for now, and I know that's in the next section. What did you observe from the system itself that would lead to the type of data that would at least indicate bias in terms of what types of establishments were being inspected?
So I I will say upfront that I did not find any evidence of intentional disgraviation. I did not. What I find is because they have no methodology and they're not using data, so you're all relying on subjective impressions. And we all know how subjective impressions of human data are flawed because you know what you know. And you're, you're, we are driven by things like, things that we are familiar with. You know, I know that neighborhood, or, you know, I know there's a spot down there that you didn't know, so let me show you. And so so there there seems to be a lot, not a lot, I mean, it was basically all subjective because there is no system to guide them, right? So so they they made an attempt, so they would say before they go on their shifts, they would go and look at those paper DARS. And I asked them, how could you possibly remember? I mean, you're you're flipping through like two weeks' worth of data to try to remember those are the places not to go to. And then you go out and you park somewhere and you say, oh, you default to what you know. And I think that's, that's a sort of a bias that's built in in terms of human nature. You go to the places that you're you you're familiar with or think are high risk. Also, and this is where that caution about the data comes in. So so when we say a place looks like it's been inspected a lot, it could have been a drip drive by. They didn't even go in, they went by a two oh two to make sure it closed that too. It could have been serving a complaint, but it's coded as a normal investigation. When somebody gets a complaint or warning, there are follow-ups, there are, you know, follow-up visits. There's like paper serving that happened afterwards. If those get coded as normal investigation, so so let's say an establishment got a warning and warning requires follow-up, so that's two visits. And that then, let's say, lead to a violation, then you have to serve the notice of violation, and you have to go back and serve something else. You know, so that's now four visits. If they all get coded not as serving paper, but all got coded as normal investigation, it looks like they went to that place four times for no reason. So that's where that data caution needs to come in because because decoding inconsistencies is one of, one of the reasons.
Okay, no further questions, so I believe we have one more section before your recommendations.
Yes, so actually, I will, I wanna make sure I address Commissioner Hong's question about slide fifty-one, which is the strange case of the January twenty-second entries. I sort of described the circumstances there, but to to simplify it is, I I noted entries that I had questions about. I I spoke to the two investigators involved. And when I went back to sort of verify the data, the data I was looking at had disappeared. And a new set of entries had replaced it, basically. The system, the current system for DAR is such that they can't, they can only tell you when this, when an entry was last submitted or edited without that, without distinction. So that last modification could be a modification or a new entry. And you noted that there, I just have a lot of questions. Why did it disappear? Why did it disappear with a modification date that coincides with my interview with one of the investigators? I was concerned that there may be alteration of government record involved here. And that's why, on the advice of the Corporation Council, they would refer to HPD.
Good, thank you.
And I will say I did not find any other criminal conduct. I would say that right, you know, right here. All right, complaint handling. I think the highlight there is that there is just no system for tracking. There's just, when you don't have a system for tracking, you don't know what happened to a complaint. And I I can, I can say this is very unfortunate. And I have to think this is one of the reasons that's driven some of the more persistent complaints. Because I know if I complain about something and somebody acts like they didn't hear me, it infuriates me. It makes me wanna complain more, right? So that's human reaction. And and I think going back to the, a theme that we talked about, people just wanna heard, wanna be heard. So when when I take the trouble to make a complaint about something, I want to, I want my city to acknowledge my complaint and to show me that they're working on it. But if you don't have the ability to track the complaint, you can't do that. They had an internal investigator and I I think I have heard suggestions externally that there be some kind of reinstitution of that that office in the liquor administration itself. I personally don't think, if I were to put an internal investigations person, I wouldn't put that person in such a small agency because it's really awkward because this is only a thirty-person agency. Then you're you're coming into work with these people every day and you're supposed to investigate them. It makes sense for a larger organization like HPD where you can have a separate department of internal affairs that. It makes sense for a larger organization like H P D, where you can have a separate department of internal affairs that just don't have to like, they can come into their own office, they have their own group of people, they're not interacting every day with the people that they're supposed to be investigating. I also think if this organization is healthy or gets healthier, it should not have the volume of investigation to require a full-time investigator, so normally an investigator's caseload, or any investig- normal internal investigation for white collar issues, is about twenty to twenty-five ongoing cases per investigator. If you have a thirty-person agency, you have twenty-five cases, I I I think the investigator is probably the least of your problems, um, there's probably other problems to fix, right? So so I think the city, I think the better answer is what the city is now doing, the city is, um, establishing a centralized, sort of unbuds investigation function that's being established. So that is, I think, a better way to handle not just complaints regarding this agency, but complaints about any city agency. And I think the liquor's, liquor agency's job is to keep track and become a stakeholder that demands accountability. So if they can track, they can say, we got this today, we forwarded to the city investigator, and it's been thirty days, where's the responsible? Right, so they they, this changes their role into someone who's basically using that investigation service and could demand accountability. But right now, the inability to 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 track, um, is is frustrating for people. And also the other problem in here is also the 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 understaffing, so the chief investigator position is vacant. So one of the reasons why complaints about enforcement is forwarded to enforcement, which is, you know, you can see that that's not the best arrangement. I was told that had there been a chief investigator, it would have gone to the chief investigator, but since there is none, either it could go up to the administrator or, you know, to enforcement, and right now they send it to both.
Any questions on that complex section, Ms. Chen? Uh, thank you, Ms. Chen, uh, it looks to me as though we're at your recommendations, uh, in terms of your systematic review.
Very good.
I would, um, it's about three fifteen, so we have about forty-five minutes left, um, I believe we will take a five-minute recess. We also want to, um, probably right after the recess, we'll call for public testimony, 'cause we do wanna make sure the public testimony is taken. Um, so we'll call anyone who wants to provide testimony.
Sure.
And then we'll leave the, um, balance of of the time for your recommendations. So we will take a brief five-minute recess. Okay, we are back, uh, on the record, thank you for allowing us to have a brief recess, um, before we move into the recommendations portion of Ms. Chen's systemic review. Um, I'd like to provide, uh, the public with opportunity to testify on this matter. We do have one individual who's, um, uh, signed up as to this, uh, testimony ahead of time, so we'll call that individual first, and then we'll allow anyone else who would like to provide public testimony to, uh, make their appearance and provide it. Um, would, is there a Mr. Richard Baldwin presence? Okay, very good, uh, is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony this time as to this agenda item? Okay, uh, Ms. Chen, uh, you again have the floor to move into your recommendations.
Great, thank you. So in trying to structure the recommendations, um, it was a little bit, you know, I had a little bit of a challenge in trying to lay it out, because there are tactical things, tasks to do, and then there's how you do them. Um, so I I did my best in trying to distinguish the more tactical with the more systemic, but also try to put them in categories. So I'm not sure it's all entirely clear, so if it's not, I'm I'm here to make it clear. So I, first, the the, you know, I I I mentioned that I noted the fact that there had been a number of prior audits, and, uh, the audits had identified some of the same issues, and that's been longstanding. So one of my questions repeatedly was, why didn't things get done? Like, I don't wanna make recommendations if you can't make it happen, and, uh, um, and I really think some of that is, there is, there is a number of reasons, but I I think some of it is resource, is this bad cycle that they're trapped in, that they don't have enough people to do things, and things then fester, and then they get worse, and people then don't wanna work there, and you have less people, and this is a cycle I don't want us to go into, uh, ag- again. And so I also think people may not realize how interdependent, um, every city agency is on the citywide system. So we, so, you know, so for example, the recruitment is is centralized, um, the review system is the same, and they use the same evaluation, performance evaluation form. Um, there, you know, if you wanna go out and procure some services, you have to go through the city's procurement system. And every dependency that you lay on something, then that's an extra layer of complication that you potentially may have. So what I try to do is I try to focus on things that, given the number of, the level of staffing, and hopefully with some help, can be realistically contemplated. And second is that they have minimum dependency on other stakeholders, but that's impossible to avoid, you're almost always gonna have some dependencies. And three is improvements that hopefully can be done and are needed in the short term. So I, you know, if I really try to make a recommendation, uh, I could probably easily double the number of recommendations that I make, but then many of them would be, you know, involving many other stakeholders, and, you know, it's just, it's complicated to to make to make them happen. Um, it's not like one agency can make all those things happen. So that, those are some of the priorities that guided my choice of recommendations, and then I put them in the categories of technology, training, investigation, enforcement practices, policy procedures, and culture. So I'm just, so then I laid them, as I laid them out in that tactical and systemic, systemic, and by category, um, I tried to number them so that it, we don't have to keep referring to something as that recommendation about DAR, right? So it makes for easy reference, so I just go through them, uh, numerically. I think the technology piece we talked about, um, that's that's pretty, you know, I think there's already much discussion on this, and it's, uh, the the very least we can do is the visualization system. Um, but certainly I think there there's, there must be tools out there that can enable something better than a paper DAR system. Um, the the key, though, is whatever system they 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 get, have to be able to talk to the other systems, right? So if you're gonna make use of data, the data have to be able to be integrated, and so that's, that has dependency, they they have to work very closely with E I T to make sure whatever system is either procured or built can act, be integrated into the citywide system, at at least certainly with other liquor systems. Um, the other is the ability to randomize and equalize inspections, so that's, I'm told that the 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 new, the they called L two system, the sort of the update to the current liquor, um, enforcement system, has the ability, should have the ability to randomize inspections. But as we all know, randomized is not random, randomized is based on an algorithm. So, um, how to write that algorithm, how to make sure that algorithm is up to date and fair, and addresses the different types of risks that you, you know, eat different, uh, different establishments have different types of risks. So how do you calculate all that in is a big piece of that randomizing. So that's the first two recommendations on technology, I'll pause there.
I have a a question on your choice of word for equalize and what that means, I understand randomized, of course.
Yeah. Mm.
Um, what what do you mean by equalize, obviously there are different types of establishments, there are establishments that have a perfect track record, others that don't, what do you mean by equalizing this?
Yes, equalizing is that what I'm hoping the next time we see that, um, that map, we would not have so many of, we would not have the greens and we're not have the reds, we would have basically yellow and oranges. So that we don't have places that have never been inspected, we don't have places that go three hundred and sixty days without inspection, yet other places that are being inspected, you know, every twenty-nine days. Um, so it's it's about the the frequency. They are not going to be all the same. The truth is that establishments are different, they have different risks, they are not going to always be the same. And you're always going to have some that's gonna end up with more, because, you know, once you find one violation, uh, it leads to other things, right? So so there, it's it, I'm not talking about a mathematical equity, so that everybody gets two inspections a year, but more proportionate and more sort of spread out than what we're seeing.
Well, and and I guess maybe that we can have a rational explanation for red screens and oranges in a geography.
Exactly, exactly. There really shouldn't be any greens, to be honest, because this this is a regulatory, um, regulatory, uh, uh, enforcement practice,
Yeah.
and part of the job is to go and make sure people are following rules, so really there should, shouldn't be anybody who's never been inspected.
Yeah, and I like that distinction between daytime, uh, establishments and nighttime, you know, retail establishments, for example, are principally during the day, of course, they're open at night, but, uh, most of their business is during the day, so, uh, they're in effect being disproportionately at this point, um, chosen because because just simply they're they're Howard's.
Right. Exactly. Other questions on technology, two recommendations? Okay, um, then there is the training, uh, which we actually have talked about. I think the key here is to try to think out of the box about who we can get to do the training, traditional answer has been H P D.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we need to diversify that, we need to bring people who have liquor enforcement experience. And I think the National Association can be a good resource, I think other municipalities and states can be good resources for us, and I think we are in a good position to, uh, explore those options.
I I'll just make the comment that I wholeheartedly agree, I think that H P D and police enforcement generally might have some good, um, tools for us, but we should be comparing ourselves to other liquor investigators and enforcement, and there's plenty nationwide that we can be accessing and utilizing. So I I wholeheartedly agree, I think I would go back, uh, in in terms of training, to my prior comment with mentorship, and perhaps that's something down the road when we have, um, a a a larger, more, um, educated force that can, um, provide that type of mentorship to to incoming trainees. But, um, for now, I think the focus on, um, the the structural training, and especially externally, um, is is critical.
Yes, I agree.
Comments or questions?
I would only comment that I know it stays in your own recommendation, um, in terms of annual training, I think for us, the more training you get yearly is better than just annually, obviously, so structure of more sooner or quicker or six month, six-month increments or something, so.
Yes, I think there should be a regular rhythm, it has to be more frequent than once a year.
Okay.
Great. There should be different topics, so usually what you do is spread out the topics, okay?
Yeah.
Um, I, before we move off of this, and it's slightly moving outside of the systems review, but in terms of training, um, I just posed a question, um, for the commission. Um, eh, should we be involved in any way in training, um, or at least experience training in some manner so that we understand? I mean, we're not here day to day, but so that we at least have some understanding of what's going on, um, at the agency level.
Oh, I think that's always helpful, but, you know, subject to your, uh, uh, of your availability to do that, because I'm very cognizant that you're, um, stepping up as citizens to serve on this commission, and it already takes a good chunk of your time. And, uh, so, but to the extent that you are, you can be available, you know, at least every now and then, to be involved in this training in any way, I think that is always helpful, that provides you another opportunity to interact with the investigators.
And like you said, the ride-along, I don't know if that's in the training or not, but that will be another opportunity.
Exactly. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Um, so the next section is the enforcement practices, that recommendation is three, I'm sorry, four through seven. So the the four is theoretically easy, um, because it is an an existing policy, it's just a policy that's not been followed for a long time. And in every respect, it really adds to the people who are able to do the enforcement. It diversifies people's experience, that so that they get to do both, that which is what they're supposed to. So to me, that was, that's an obvious one. Um, I think because people are, have been accustomed to this division, the getting used to that for the people may not be easy. But on paper, this is about as straightforward as they come. Uh, number five is, you know, so if you get more people, you can do different times, right? So adding adding daytime shifts, um, I also think they need to do more data-driven, like we have seen. So I said monthly, but it certainly could be just what we saw here, right? It could be before every shift, you take a look at what's happening. But implementing some kind of systemic, regular review of data to see how you're doing on the enforcement, like we have done here. Um, and then the trac- tracking criminal citations outcome, so this 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 comes out of one of the issues that I had noted, which is, we're not sure, um, the investigators tell me they're not sure what happens with some of the citations that they had issued, particularly with the under, the shoulder taps, the underage drinking. Um, so if you don't know what's happening, um, you really should, 'cause that would inform what you do. I mean, if if none of your criminal citations are being, uh, followed through by prosecutor attorney's office, that tells you something. So at least you should be able to find out why, and you might wanna ask, you know, should you continue to do it? If they are indeed being followed up, but not at, you know, the percentage rate that you might expect, you know, you would want to check, why is that? What's your, you know, is there something in the way that we're doing it that's causing some of this? So so I think following up just the outcome of the criminal citations that they do issue would be informative about that practice. So those are the enforcement practices, um, recommendations.
I don't know if this is an appropriate place for it, but, um, at least in my private practice, um, experiences, I've noticed that a lot of the licensees, um, complain that they just don't always understand the rules or understand how they're being enforced. So what's the balance, and I don't know if you looked at this in this analysis or not, but what's the balance, or should there be, um, a balance between enforcement and education? Um, and providing, um, uh, some sort of opportunity for licensees to better understand, um, the rules and and how they're being enforced? Is that something for enforcement to do, is that something that's more systemic that we should do as a agency policy, uh, where does that fit in?
So my understanding is actually audit does some of that, that's my understanding, is that audit does some of the, uh, the auditing section, they they actually go out to some of the new licensees and try to educate them. And I think, but I don't know the extent, 'cause that really wasn't a focus by reviews, I don't know the extent that education goes. Um, I think it's a good idea, I think some of enforcement itself certainly can be educational, particularly for people's first first time offenses, right? So if you if you have someone who's a relatively new licensee, who's just not familiar with the rules, uh, they, the first time, it's the first time they've been found with something that's not terribly serious, I think that could be naturally an opportunity to to educate. Um, but I think some of that can also go into the public engagement, um, which I'll talk about a bit more.
But so one of the things I think you touched on earlier was the policy of warnings versus violations, right? And, you know, a warning seems like it would be a good time to get the attention of the licensee to do training.
Yes.
'Cause that's the first of the first, if you got kind of one of those, and and
Yes. Yes.
it seemed like there was not a good, um, systemic, uniform way of conducting the warnings, uh, or was I reading too much into your?
It doesn't seem to, there doesn't seem to be, yeah. I also think so, for example, information such as how new the licensee is, is relevant here, and, right? So it it could be an establishment that's been there for a long time, but they recently changed ownership. So even though it's a long-time establishment, the licensee there is new and not as familiar. So that kind of information, if we have a good digital system, should be readily available, and that be part of the calculation in terms of, you know, what what you, what do you do with these situations?
One of the byproducts, I would hope to see if education was at an enforcement level, um, um, would be the community, um, relationship. Uh, as you said, to to at the outset, was, you know, sometimes, um, en- en- enforcement's going into, um, a situation that could be dangerous, that's, um, at at least when they're walking into a bar at night, the licensee is putting flags up, oh, liquor enforcement's here. And, uh, you know, I don't know how much of this is possible, but I would love to see a a a good relationship between enforcement and the licensing community, so they're not seen in that way, and they're trained to not, um, act in in such a way.
Yes, actually, you know, we don't have to be rigid and go, um, uh, numerically, so so that's precisely what's behind that public engagement recommendation. I think it would be helpful if people have a chance to, the people, the investigators, and the the licensees, and the public, so they So they don't just serve the licensees. There's also the licensee's neighbors, the community at large. Have an opportunity to interact in a way that's outside of that enforcement environment. Um so so when I when I was an in-house compliance officer, my job was to go and conduct internal investigations. And often times you go, you investigate and you have to tell the general manager that they have to fire their star performer, right? So I always tell my team and people who do that job, make sure that you also establish relationship with the general managers and senior leadership when you don't have an investigation. Just stop by their office and ask them how are things going? Because they need to, you need to have that relationship with them. You that helps you see each other as people. And if you only see someone when they're potentially violating rules, that creates a tension that doesn't go away. It only exacerbates over time. So I think and I think that's, you know, that's true with not just enforcement. It's true with licensing. It's true with auditing. It's always better when people get to see their city um public servants as people. And for the people who work in city agencies to think about the public as not those people who I have to be enforcing against. It's a broader view of the community. And I think uh that that's why I re I put that in there. I think that's one way to change, you know, build trust and change relationships is for you to have opportunities to interact with each other in a non-enforcement, non-licensing, non-auditing type of environment.
Great, thank you. And and one of, you know, one of the concerns I have moving forward in this process with recommendations and implementing them is this idea that, you know, people come with certain um presumptions or certain biases. And that leads to a direct miscommunication or misunderstanding between the licensee and and enforcement in this example. Um and then that leads to an escalation and then we have a problem. Um and I think um if we have a a a process systemically to have broader education and have uh the ability for um more public dialogue, I think we can avoid that from the outset.
Yes.
Uh so that we're not placing either party in a position um of escalation.
Exactly. Exactly. Completely agree. Um let me cut to investigation. Um they have to have a system to track complaints. I don't care if it's an Excel spreadsheet. Um but a centralized way where one place you can look at when it came in, who made it, what it was, and what was done with it. Hopefully, when the city builds its investigative function, that their responsibility will pretty much end there, would then go to the city uh investigation function. But you know, there's part of that system is also making sure you respond to complaints um when you can. So sometimes complaints are anonymous and you can't get back to them, right? But um those who choose not to be anonymous do so for a reason. They want to be heard. And they need to have a system where they are able to say what happened with their complaint.
When it comes to complaints, one of um my general concerns is the anonymous complaint and the ability that could be used as a tool for someone in the public to abuse it. Um how is that addressed? I don't know if you've gotten to this level in your recommendations, but how is that addressed in a a systematic way?
I have not gone into that level of detail, um but typically, you know, I as as an investigator, I always say it's not really the source of the complaint that, you know, the source of complaint is one consideration. Because if you have more information about the source, you can assess how credible it is. But my first focus is always the validity of the complaint. So the first thing you always try to do is to corroborate a complaint. And complaints, just in my experience generally, they come in at all different levels. Um and some, you are gonna have to accept they're not actionable, right? Somebody calls and says, an investigator was mean to me. Well, what are you gonna do with that? Um so you know, that that really you can't. But if you have a way to communicate, this person chooses to do so um by email, for example, you can at least email the person back, well, which day? Um which investigator? And at least give you some place to start. And then if you do that and you don't get any response, that's I don't think anybody can tell you that that's an actionable complaint if you have made those efforts. Then there are anonymous complaints that are actionable. They give sufficient information for you to corroborate certain details. And then you look at the records, you look at data, you interview people, and you do your traditional investigation. You should be able to, you know, um address it. It's addressing it doesn't necessarily mean that you get all the answers. A lot of times, I would say, I've done investigations, the result of which was they raise more questions, but I cannot get to the answer. Uh in part because when we do these investiga- these investigations, we don't have uh police power. Um I can't call people into a grand jury and make the best of it. Um so I don't have all any of those tools. I can't issue a subpoena, look at people's bank account. Um so without those tools, a lot of times your investigative inquiry can only go so far. But at least you have to go that far. You have to be able to say that I have chased this to the ends of my ability. And I may not have answered all the questions, but here's what we know. Okay, that's on investigation. Um then number nine is uh policies and procedures. I think someone just needs to sit down and give it a good scrub. And some of the specific ones that align with the the technology and training and enforcement practice and investigation, I had sort of put it there underneath them. So they they should certainly have a develop uh have a policy to mandate randomized inspections. Um and and then perhaps include further definition of that equity that that we were talking about. Um the AP, the there is a current uh or current, there is an existing policy that mandates a monthly production of twelve months training plans. I personally think that may be a bit much because when you do something that routinely, it becomes part of the wallpaper and people don't take it seriously. So I think it's probably more effective, they simply just have an annual training plan that looks twelve months done, fix it, and you look at it again next, you know, twelve months later. But they should do it at least every twelve months. Um they should have policies that mandate, well, they should have and actually enforce the policies that mandate rotations. And um the the policies, the existing policies they have on complaint handling needs scrapping, needs some cleaning up and clarification. And policies that are outdated should be removed. Um I did include later some overall questions to ask in in that exercise. Um I think for every policy and procedure revision, those questions need to be clear. Why do we have policies? Who's gonna be responsible for them? Who's supposed to do the tests? I mean, this is one of the issues I found in some of the complaint policies is it says something shall be done, doesn't say who's supposed to do it. And you know, when you don't say that, nobody knows it. So that's the the first slide of the recommendations. That's one through nine. Um I'm gonna move to the next slide and.
Yes, please.
Okay. The next slide is um so then so it's all about culture and that's recommendations ten through seventeen. Um I do know, so even though recruitment is centralized, the recruitment and the promotion, you have to use external uh stakeholders. I do believe that the agency itself has the ability to change the questions. So I think there should be people sitting down thinking about what are the questions that are really relevant in uh our hiring and promotion and put those in there instead of some of the ones that we currently see. Um the cross functional, so number that's that was number ten on uh recruitment and promotion questions. Number eleven is established cross functional working committees for policies and proc- procedures and project management. That is an attempt to get people to work together. Because I do see such distrust, such division in this small organization. One of the things that we have to help people do is learn to work together. And also, doing it this way gives them a voice, a voice and a stake in the outcome. So I also know that from at least one of the interviews that a lot of the past way of addressing policy is to hire an external vendor, have that vendor produce a whole set of policies and adopt it. That gives no one in the agency any voice.
Mm-hmm.
Um you get the copy and paste policies from HPD and uh that's not all relevant to the work that's going on in in this agency. So to change that, you want the policies to be relevant, you want the projects to have active stakeholders and you want to get people to work together. And I think that's that's the way to do it. And and earlier in the policy part, I specifically recommended that uh in areas where we need expertise, you know, we can certainly get external expertise. And one of the ways that you can mediate the internal differences is to have these working committees, some of them at least chaired by an external person. And we all know how it is that you and I can fight, but where when we're in front of a stranger, we feel like we have to sort of tone it down a little bit, right? So I think I wanna leverage that dynamic that we are gonna have some external expert who can provide expertise, but also that ability to mediate. We're gonna also, you know, in certain policy and procedures, other stakeholders, like the city investigations person or core, who can will be part of the mix. So now you have more sort of outsiders in front of whom you have to sort of tone things down a bit. Um I'm hoping to to create those dynamics that would help people learn to work together. That's the thought on my end. Um number twelve uh is the ride along, uh which I think you all seem to be uh in agreement with. Um honestly, to push that further, um I would even say that someday, when I think when when there is better sort of working relationship, they might even consider the same concept for people who work at different parts of the agency. So um someone who works in licensing, do a day, one day, one day shift at the front desk. Someone who is the front desk, do one, do a ride along with the enforcement. So they all get to know each other's job a little bit. Um so you can push that concept a little further, but I think we can start with with the commissioners and uh um we can play with that idea of just walking in someone's shoes. And public engagement, we already talked about. Um and then there's a a bunch of more systemic ones. So I do think there should be much more clear probationary and performance standards so people know what's what they're expected to do. Um we talked about diversifying the culture orientation beyond HPD. Um and then uh Commissioner Buckley, that's really to your question about, I sort of put that, you know, it's number sixteen out of seven. It's not in order of importance, but it's sort of, I think, uh a longer term. It's not as pressing, in my view, um as as some of the uh the policy, the internal policy and procedure revision, for example. And then the unlicensed premises, I I do think that, you know, needs some clarification. I I, you know, I I asked them, what do you do with unlicensed premises? The answer is like, well, we can't do much. And and I feel like that's potentially creating uh a lack of equity in some way as well. So if I have a license, I actually have all these rules I have to obey. But if I run an unlicensed firm, I can do whatever I want. Um that doesn't seem right to me. Um so so I if if that's the case, I think that, you know, that needs to be looked at a little bit more. So those are the thoughts behind the seventeen recommendations. You know, pause there and see if any questions or comments.
I was gonna comment when you were talking about collaboration under number eleven. Um to me, um it represented for the employee the sense of ownership, of course, not ownership in an equity sense, but I have the ability to own this, own my position, have a con- have the ability to contribute meaningfully to the organization and agency as a whole. Um and that goes to the confidence in being able to do your job well and thrive in your environment. So um I think the collaboration aspect is is very important.
I I was just thinking about the enforcement options for i unlicensed premises. I I was I was thinking we're a regulatory agency for people that want to be regulated or you're a criminal enterprise that's doing something outside of the regulatory scheme. And that's the division between our inspectors and um HPD would be my initial kind of thought.
Yeah. Exactly. And then there may be, you know, just a clarification about who's supposed to do what. Um but there just seems to be a little bit lack of clarity on what's happening there.
Okay.
Um I don't know where exactly this fits and and apologies, it's probably not fitting under culture. I probably missed it above. But um one of the um things I've noticed and and I was reminded uh by number sixteen, update the liquor rules, is uh over time, um things have been inserted into the the administrative rules for liquor investigators to um investigate um at premises that aren't what I would consider liquor related. Um their building permits or their health or and this is um evidence probably most clearly in the emergency order when everyone just said liquor, you handle it.
Um that's why I call it the perfect storm.
Yeah. So where should that responsibility lie? I mean, I understand that liquor investigators are out there so they can be utilized, but it to me, it doesn't, if they don't have the proper training in some other department, they shouldn't be enforcing rules that are related to something that's not liquor related.
I think this is where, you know, we're talking about that dependency with uh with other city agencies. This is where this is a very clear example of that. So how do you have a relationship um and structure where you can refer certain matters? So if it's a building permit, how do we work with EPP? What is the process of making a referral? How do they follow up? How do we ensure they follow up? Those those are, you know, and and I probably would make more recommendations in those areas if I didn't think there were just too many dependencies to be something that we can accomplish uh, you know, in the in the near term. But I I agree that that's that's an issue. And I also think it's important that we think about as we pile on things for investigators to do, that we can't blame them. Like back to my cook in the beginning, right? The the cook in the kitchen, like, you know, in in addition to having no recipe and a rusty pan and a hot plate, now you're asked to go and serve tables and you're not doing a good job of serving tables and now you're being blamed for serving tables, which was never part of your job to begin with. So I think that was a little bit of what happened during COVID. So a- and again, I, you know, it's not their fault, I think. I think it's the system. We were also, of course, dealing with an epidemic that no one in our lifetime has experienced. So it's not something that anybody on the on this planet has experienced with. So it was extraordinary, but unfortunately, it does create a a good case study, unfortunately, for what could go wrong.
Yeah, and and I can be empathetic to some extent with the investigators because for the emergency COVID orders, I didn't want to be up here as a commissioner doing adjudications on those issues because, you know, they didn't really feel like it was our place to do that, so.
And the rules were changing all the time and there was, you know, it's just that there were public health rules and um it was uh it was a confusing situation, I think, for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
But they were they were thrown in the midst of it.
Thank you, because I do think that there needs to be a a clear distinction about what what's appropriately liquor and what's not appropriately liquor.
I agree.
And um it seems like that's been blurred over the years.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're doing very well on time, seems.
Yeah, and yeah, well, well, we've only got five more minutes, but any other wrap-up questions or comments from the commission or or from Ms. Chan? Any other wrap-up comments?
Uh no, I don't. I I think the only thing I would say is that um I think it's important that the commission doesn't be under pressure to adopt all recommendations and in equal weight. Um so I I do think it's an important discussion that you need to have with the administration, the the liquor administrations of the agency, about what are priorities and what are what things are realistic, which things are more easily done. Um and that is something that, you know, people who are in the job be able to provide that perspective a lot more. And and I want to reiterate what I said in the beginning. What we want is to make this place where good people could work. And what we don't want is to make this place that no one wants to work at because we all lose in that place. So I think we have the possibility of changing things. We can change small things and small changes can lead to big changes. We don't need to be terribly ambitious. Take a few things, start there, um but do them well. And I think we can have that more that that can ultimately improve what we are experiencing. So thank you again.
Okay, any any final comments or questions from the commission from Ms. Chan?
Just our deep appreciation for the work and the analysis. This will be so helpful for us to have guidance for the future.
Thank you.
Yes, and Commissioner Hong mentioned this uh at the beginning, and I'll just put it in your ear at least, um well, two things. One, this was uh focused on the uh investigative side, but uh we have a licensing side as well that we haven't really touched in terms of a uh systematic review. Is that something that, I know you haven't gotten into it too much with your review here, but is that something that you feel like would be appropriate and you would be available to do it? And the second comment would be some sort of um a review at a a future date, whatever would be appropriate, a year, a year and a half, less, um where uh your team could come back and. um, where, uh, your team could come back and and assess, uh, the changes that are being made and implemented, how those are doing and what's left to do.
Um, I think the all, everything is possible. Um, but I I think my initial view on the on the licensing question is I might suggest getting a little time just to get this whole project sort of on the way and let the agency, because this is going to be disruptive for licensing too. And certainly if you choose to reactivate this policy, that, uh, that makes this their, their, their time, right? So it's gonna be disruptive and people will need time to get used to it. So you might wanna think about giving it a little bit of time for things to, at least that piece to settle a little bit, um, before moving towards it. There, there is some data in there, um, that's already giving, telling you some, something about the licensing. Um, there, you know, about the the number of complaints that they, um, that they have. I think there, there are certainly, um, there's, there's gonna be need for time to settle things a little bit. Um, I think coming back in a, in the future, I'm always happy to. I also think the city auditor can be a part of that solution as well. Um, my, my, I was careful not to, you know, I'm careful to tell everyone in this review process that I'm not an auditor. I wouldn't know how to do an audit if my life depended on it, um, because I'm not trained that way. Um, they, and audit has different methodologies. But I think that's also part of the the audit city auditor's function and, uh, they can certainly help, uh, in part, uh, as well. So I, I'm happy to do it as as, you know, as I have done it, uh, a year from now or eighteen months from now, whenever you want. Uh, I can also partner or work with or assist the city auditor in doing something. So I think those are all things that that are options.
And I guess my final question will be, and it's a follow-up to that question, and the reason I ask it is, um, it's, it's quite obvious from your report that this has, um, been systemic for quite some time. Um, there's been a lot of turnover over the years, just vice nature with the commission, commissioners come on and off. Uh, there's been, uh, turnover in, in fact vacancies at the highest positions currently. Um, and there have been attempts to make changes, uh, with varying successes over the years. Um, we as a commission certainly want to ensure that this is done and this sticks. Uh, and so we want to develop, um, in addition to the recommendations, um, working through which recommendations we're implementing and in what order, we want to ensure that there's a process that in, that will ensure that these are done. Um, and so maybe as closing, closing statements, if there's anything, um, that you would like to speak as to that.
I think you touched on a point that we have talked about from the beginning, which is the the notion of institutionalized practices. My sense from this review is that there's a lot of things that are personality dependent. And 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 literally, you know, I have heard employees say that someone new comes in, everything starts from scratch. That's not what we want. Um, we want consistent institutional practices that can be changed and modified, but subject to a process. So I think this is why I normally am not someone who's crazy about policy and procedures. Usually I find them like burdensome, boring and all of that. But I, you know, I can't believe I'm in the middle of a review where I'm, where the centerpiece of my review, I almost wanna say, are the policies and procedures. Because they do form the backbone. That, that is where you're supposed to go when you have questions about how we do things. And that is supposed to stick. Uh, and this is, so, so we, we have, we have to have a way to build institutional memory, institutional practices where people form this mental habit of, but what does the policy say? That's absent right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we are at, um, a little after four P M., so we will, um, adjourn this special hearing. We'll take a brief recess and then we will come back for our, uh, regular, um, regular hearing today. So thank you again very much, Ms. Chen. We very much appreciate your report, um, your diligence, uh, and all that you have contributed to helping this agency, uh, better as well.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, and with that, we are adjourned.